Seventeenth Village of Woodbury Planning Board Meeting, I'm your Chair Chris Gerber. Just before we get started tonight, first I'd like to introduce Tom DeLuca. He's the newest member of the Village of Woodbury Planning Board. So, warm welcome to Tom.
Go easy.
Go easy guys.
With that, I'd also like to thank Richard Catagio for all his service and work with the Village of Woodbury Planning Board over the years. He was a tremendous asset to the community and to this board, and his input will be missed. With that, we're going to just change the agenda around a little bit. Tonight, we're actually going to start with item number three, which is for Woodbury Commons Coffee Truck. And that is to review the application submitted for the installation of a coffee truck and associated outdoor seating area in the courtyard outside of the Polo Ralph Lauren store, said properties located within the Woodbury Common Shopping Center and is known on the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps, Section 225 1.70.2 and 226.1.1. All right, Dennis, usually your first one in the bullpen, so you're up. You're on mute.
Can you hear me all right now?
Yes.
Very good. Okay, well, we distributed a memorandum on our review of this application. And I'm going to go through a few of the highlights on that. This is a standalone unit, looks like a coffee truck. It has the appearance of wheels and the appearance of a coffee truck, but it's stationary in its use. There really are no wheels and it's connected physically with utilities, to the necessary utilities, electric, I guess, gas and water and the other things they need. We talked about your applications that you've reviewed in the prior applications for RMUs, those are retail merchandising units, push carts, kiosks and food trucks. This one is akin to a kiosk and we're calling it a kiosk. It may look like a truck, but it is more of the function of a kiosk. So, those are permitted accessory uses, that's what you've decided in previous applications. And since it fits the definition for a kiosk, it would fall under your, and that's more of a permanent structure, it would fall under your requirements for compliance with the gross leasable area requirements, the GLA requirements for Woodbury Common. In 2014, year-round use of the kiosk was considered and that's when it was decided that they would be falling under GLA. We talked to the applicant about this and John Villapiano can advise you further, but our understanding is, first off, the building inspector agrees with that opinion and John has taken a look at the approvals they've received thus far and has agreed that they would, Woodbury Common will forego the Building 20 expansion that the board already approved and in favor of this truck being approved until we sort out all of the GLA on that summary. You will recall that we had a comprehensive analysis that was submitted by Woodbury Common. The first one really we had this way that identified everything. It's a very good analysis, although there were some differences that we had from the CAD drawings they provided to the areas they've shown. Those differences are minor. Nevertheless, in, there's a lot of stores and when you add them all up, it becomes a little bit of a discrepancy, which we simply need to work out with them. The difference here with the 956 square feet that was already approved to the 100 and I think it's almost 50 square feet of this truck is such that there's a good sufficient safety factor built in, so we have no problem with proceeding with this application. As far as the site plan goes, pedestrian circulation safety is always paramount. You've had conditions in previous applications to address this. Simply means that if they're going to build something there that is going to have tools and workmen working there, it has to be barricaded and protected from the public. As anybody knows, not right now perhaps because of the pandemic, but Woodbury Common is usually a sea of people moving all over the place and it needs to be protected so that someone doesn't inadvertently go in an area where they shouldn't be. Woodbury Common's been good with doing that, we expect they will, but we also recommend you have a condition to that effect. As far as the utilities, the drawing that we got for the site plan was an architectural, I would say, rendering of a site plan. It doesn't have the details in terms of water, sewer, drainage and those sorts of things. The requirement here for us is that they don't block any drainage ways, that this doesn't impede the flow of water. They're not producing any additional impervious area, they're simply putting a structure on what is now impervious area, but it needs to be able to flow and drain. We can't tell that from the drawing, we should be able to get a drawing that would show us that. As far as the ESO access, they have to maintain a 20-foot clear passage. Where the truck is going shouldn't be a problem. There are benches, garbage cans, stands, awnings and other things that they're proposing. Those things will need to be in accordance with the ESO plans so that there's nothing that can't be pushed right out of the way in the way of that 20-foot clearway. There is one thing that is in that area and that is a sign, a wayfinding sign. They've shown it being removed, but they also show it being relocated in an area which looks like a similar problem. So, my recommendation is that they provide a plan that shows that there's a 20-foot clear path. If it can be done where they're showing it, that's fine. If it can't, they'll just have to provide another location for that sign. This kiosk will generate trash just like any of the other kiosks and we had a condition, you had a condition previously and I think it would apply to this one as well, that they simply provide sufficient garbage receptacles in appropriate locations so that the area doesn't become unsightly. For pedestrian safety and queuing, we previously recommended that they have a plan that is for some kind of method of controlling queue via ropes, cones, signs or other things. We don't know what facilities, kiosks, will actually require that. It's just that they have to have a plan for something should it be required. If there's no large grouping of people here, then it may not be necessary. But also in the pandemic now, they'll have to have temporary restrictions. Hopefully the temporary, we get out of it quickly, but for spacing on the lines like many of the stores have now, six-foot spacing. So, for those things, the other thing is ARB. They provided you with information on the appearance of this truck. They provide you with information on the colors and they've also provided you with the palette of colors that was approved for the Red Apple Hudson Valley Market Hall area. You should review that to make sure that it's compatible and is to your, is acceptable. For landscaping, they removed several large planters. They have provided several small planters and they also have a lot of new umbrellas and different things for seating. I'd just note that for you, Jonathan, I think in his memo said it was satisfactory, but I'll let him comment on that further. As far as lighting, we're not clear whether there's any new lighting. I don't know that there has to be, but if there's lighting associated with the truck or there's general lighting, the truck should not block the general lighting there and create shadows for, you know, pedestrian movement. And for general safety, the coffee truck is stationary even though it looks like it's mobile. I don't think it's mobile at all. If they can simply give us, you know, that on the record, that's all we probably need. Just want to make sure that vandalism can't, you know, vandals can't come in and push something someplace that it shouldn't be. And I think this is more permanent than that and I don't think you need to be worried, but I just wanted to note that simply because they really made, did a good job of making it look like a truck. Under, in secret, under the 2012 improvements, which were comprehensive improvements, you had a DEIS prepared, you had an FEIS, you had findings. I think that this is a minor thing that can fall under that umbrella. And if Kelly agrees with that, I think you can conclude secret with just saying that it falls under that umbrella. And that's all I have. Unless you have any questions.
Thank you very much Dennis. Does any member of the planning board have questions for Dennis?
Yes.
Go ahead Cindy.
Dennis, as far as the other kiosks, and I don't frequent Woodbury Common, so I just really don't know, as far as the other kiosks, is there seating for the other kiosks the way this has planned seating?
I think that John would probably be better to answer that. I think they have nominal seating around, whether they put in special seating for it or whether there was just seating there available for it, I'm not sure.
I guess.
This one does come with seating, this one, they're asking you to look at seating.
Because that's my question, because this seating is going to be specifically for this, why isn't that area where the seating considered under GLA?
It's a good question. I have to ask Gary, maybe we should, well, at some point here, soon we'll unmute John. I'd like to hear, because we did have outdoor seating associated with a couple of restaurants.
Yeah, Farm I think is the newest one.
Yeah, and I'd have to look back because I'm not so sure that we counted that because it was, I think Gary had an opinion that it was temporary, it was seasonal and therefore it wasn't that way. Now this, people will still buy coffee probably, maybe they buy more coffee when it gets cold, but I don't know that they'll sit down at the tables and chairs in the dead of winter. He may still have that same opinion, but I understand your point. We have not considered that at this point. That's a good question.
Okay, and then my other question, and again it might be for John, is Building 20, that was approved back, well, over two years ago in 2018. So what's the status? I mean, did they, did they do anything with that space? Did they, weren't they supposed to demolish it and also then make it bigger?
There were a number of things they were supposed to do and there was also an appendage on the back. That's the other thing we're talking about. I think I'll let John describe exactly what they've done.
Okay, thank you.
Because when I spoke to Gary about it, he said he wouldn't issue a building permit. Well, if he's not going to issue a building permit, then they haven't done maybe that. But maybe, maybe they've done the renovation portion, I'm not sure.
Okay, thanks.
Does anybody else from the board have questions for Dennis? You're muted Rob.
My microphone on?
There you go.
All right, Dennis, did the ESOs respond yet as far as the whole situation as far as safety?
No, we, I don't know that this has been referred to the ESOs yet and quite frankly, if they maintain the 20-foot separation and clear width, it would, I don't think it's a problem. I think we should send it over just so they can have it. But I, it's not the type that would necessarily rise to having a meeting with this. Unless of course, the ESOs do have an issue. I think right now, if they remove that sign, it's an impediment to the ESO path, it'd actually be an improvement. So, because that was an issue that Gary and I spoke about a little while ago with the Common and they were planning on doing some relocation of that sign.
And the other question I had, is there any construction that would be involved as far as baking this truck or is it, it's going to be wheeled in and made stationary from that point on?
Well, I know there's utilities that have to be brought in, but whether it's prefabbed and brought to the site or constructed on-site, I'm not sure. That would be something the applicant would have to let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Dennis? On the board. We'll get to you, we'll get to you in a minute John, we're just, we're going to just go through the consultants and then we'll do our normal.
It sounds like we have more work to do before we can really make a call.
I mean, there's definitely some questions I think the members of the board have. Let's just get through consultants first and then let's talk to the applicant and go from there. All right, Jonathan?
Yes, you have a memo from us dated June 11th and it's a pretty simple memo. I'm not going to repeat the same points that Dennis made because he did make a lot of planning comments that are really the same as ours. One thing that he didn't mention in our examination of this, we believe that the kiosk use really is going to serve existing patrons of the Common. We wouldn't anticipate that anyone would travel to Woodbury Common just to get coffee here. They're already going to have arrived and been there and then decide to get the coffee. So we don't see it generating an increase in pedestrian or vehicular trips. And also, in that vein, as kind of a response to Sandy's question to Dennis, the seating area could be used for getting coffee, but sort of the way the Common works and other mall situations is people can sit there even if they're not getting coffee, if they're tired. You know, it's not like an exclusive, an exclusive area for the restaurant like in a regular restaurant when, because it's in the courtyard. So, that may go into the, to the building inspector's determination on the GLA issue because once again, it's not, it's not really devoted to the coffee truck. It's a general seating area that could be used by anybody who walks by. Otherwise, I think Dennis covered all my comments and given the late start and all, I don't really have to go through the whole memo. You have it available and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody from the board have questions for Jonathan? Dennis, I have a quick step back to you. I was looking through the file, I don't see an opinion from Gary about him making a food, even though it looks like a food truck, acts like a food truck, but it's a kiosk. Is that just something you talked to him verbally about or?
That's correct. I called him because I wanted to see what his opinion was on GLA and he was of the opinion that it would fall under GLA.
Okay, thank you Dennis. All right, Kelly? Do you have anything?
I do have a couple of things, just generally. This application, as Dennis was saying, under secret, I don't think it implicates any significant adverse environmental impacts. I think that actually a reaffirmation of the earlier secret findings that was done back in 2012 would be appropriate. As far as GML referrals, it is required, it was referred on March 11th. A response was received on April 9th stating that this was a local determination. And also, this is actually an amended site plan and special permit approval as well as ARB approval for this additional coffee truck. Previously, as I think Dennis mentioned, you had done an approval for eight kiosks that were seasonal. This would be a ninth kiosk, which is additional. And there's no mention of this one being seasonal, so I think the applicant does need to explain if this is going to be year-round, if it's going to be seasonal, how that's going to work. But a public hearing is required and that's all I have.
Thank you. Kelly, does anybody have any questions for Kelly before we move to the applicant? John, I guess you'll start it off for the Commons?
Oh, you unmuted me. Yep, so, good evening everyone, I hope all is well. Thank you for the opportunity to present this project. I apologize that I, I actually got, I did not hear all of the board questions or comments. I had a, I had a connection issue and had to join through my iPad. We are Premium Outlet Partners, LP is the applicant and we have been working closely with the Ralph's Coffee and Polo teams to best integrate this use into Woodbury Common. It is located in the courtyard outside of Polo's flagship store and what the plan that we have here, what we think, and I, there are several members from the Ralph's team that are on this, this meeting and they'll, they'll provide many more details and hopefully answer a lot of the questions that were, were asked by both consultants and board members. But what we're hoping here is to, again, activate a section of Woodbury Common and provide more amenities to the customers, which is the ongoing theme. Keep customers coming, keep them there longer and as, as, as we hope that's the best, in the best interest of our tenants, best interest of Simon and the Village of Woodbury. So, with that, we have a handful of people from the Ralph's team. I would like to turn it over to Aaron Vonberg, who oversees real estate for Polo and Ralph's throughout all of North America. So, Kelly or Chris, I'm not sure who is at the controls, but Aaron Vonberg would be the next speaker.
Can you hear me here?
Yes.
I got you Aaron.
Okay, great. So I'm on video as well. Thanks John and thank you everyone for having us here this evening. As John mentioned, my name is Aaron Vonberg. I oversee real estate for Polo Ralph Lauren Factory Stores in North America. I'm here with a number of my colleagues who are on the phone. Presenting this evening however, are myself and Brendan Curran, who's with our hospitality group, who some of you met on the Zoom link, and Ralph Strammell, who's with our architecture and design studio. We're here to discuss our proposed Ralph's Coffee Truck, which is located on the interior courtyard at Woodbury Common. We, Brendan this evening will speak to the operations component and then he'll hand it off to Ralph, who's going to speak to some of the design issues on the property as well. We're, this is the first truck of this kind that we've done in an outlet mall in North America and we're excited to bring it to the town here. And we feel as though it could help, you know, enhance the shopping experience at the center as well. One thing I just want to second is that we feel strongly that the seating area is, that's for public use. It's for anyone to use, anyone who's walking by, needs a rest, can sit there, grab a cup of coffee if you so choose. So with that, I'll hand it off to Brendan to speak to the operations component.
Thank you Aaron and thank you board for having us. Very excited to present to you guys today. I echo a lot of what Aaron said in terms of being very excited about this project and we really think it could enhance the overall experience of the center. I'll take a quick step back, I know everyone is short on time and just kind of give you an introduction to the Ralph's Coffee brand. Ralph's Coffee really started expanding about two years ago. We operate three coffee shops currently in New York City, two coffee shops and one truck and that truck is located in Rockefeller Center. So we've done coffee trucks before. We also have a presence overseas. We have two locations in Hong Kong's and Hong Kong, three locations in Japan and we're a growing business. Hospitality was a natural next footstep for Ralph Lauren to go into. We're a lifestyle brand and we think for our customers to enjoy hospitality experience, whether that be at one of our restaurants or coffee stop, this was a natural next step for us. And really the customers, we've gotten very positive feedback from everyone that we've done it. To address some of the things that Dennis mentioned and some of the questions that had.
The questions that had.
This was. Someone's not on mute, so I get an echo.
Somebody just called in, so I just muted them. Whoever called in, I'll unmute you after Brendan finishes his proposal so we can find out who you are.
So when planning to expand, as Aaron said, you know, naturally Woodbury Commons, because we have such an outlet presence there and we've been good partners and we're good partner, have a good partnership with Simon, it was a natural next step to unlock this and bring Ralph's Coffee to Herman. In terms of the day-to-day operations, you know, we've, based on some of the coffee shops we've had globally and in New York City, we would expect anywhere between 200 to 400 transactions a day. In terms of the employment, again, I think based on seasonality when the traffic comes, meaning that there'll probably be more traffic in the winter as the holiday shopping season comes on, I think I would expect anywhere from eight to 12 employees, new employees for the Ralph's Coffee brand and probably a manager on-site. Yeah, this is something that we're very much looking forward to. As I was, I think I was just about to mention earlier in terms of Dennis, what was saying, this is very much a kiosk, we view this as a kiosk. There is no engine, every space that you see is designed to be, you know, for storage and make sure we can maximize the operations out of that coffee truck. We do expect to have some back-of-house presence within the Ralph Lauren Store, flagship store, if we need an extra, you know, storage space or whatever. So, yeah, very excited about this and it's something we've done and we think we can be successful here. And with that, I'm going to kick it over to Ralph, who can answer all the planning questions in terms of the architecture and design and construction of the truck and plaza.
I hope, thank you, I hope I can answer all those. But clearly, this is a very exciting project for us. We've been working on this for quite a while with Simon very closely. So we're, we're looking forward to getting this off the ground. I think with regards to the general placement of the truck, we've had several meetings on-site, laid out best locations, visibility, impeding competitors, possibly adjoining neighbors, that sort of thing. I think we've arrived at a very, an excellent compromise, good location, I think. It's great visibility within the courtyard and I think it will, will definitely create interest and drive traffic to the area. Not any additional for truck, traffic, I would say, that's, that wouldn't come to the center anyhow, as was mentioned. But I think just overall in terms of creating interest and sort of a point of focus. The truck is about 20 feet by six feet wide, just under eight feet in height. It's completely self-sufficient in terms of the amenities to provide the food and beverage components that they're serving. We are placing a back-of-house location within the store that's accessible from the exterior to the right of the, our space that we're currently occupying. The additional seating under the arcade will, you know, be, I think enhancing further the architecture, the color palette, which is all based on the approved and previously used palette that was, of materials used in the center. Otherwise, I'm not sure if there are specific questions.
Would there, Ralph, this is Chris with the planning board, would there be any use of portable propane heaters in the fall and winter to keep the seating open?
Well, we had looked into that, but as far as I know, we were told that would not be allowed, so.
But it would be open for operation 365 days a year or whatever the conference is open?
That's correct.
Any other members, Sandy, Tommy?
Yes.
Joe?
Um, as far as the, I see it says light food options. Is there going to be any cooking or is this prepackaged food? Or what do you need when you're talking about food?
That's a good question. No cooking, the short answer is no cooking. Right now, in terms of our New York coffee shops, most of those are brought in third-party, so we would get third, already baked, baked goods delivered on a daily basis to be provided and sold.
And when you said branded coffee merchandise, is that like mugs or?
That's exactly right. So it's t-shirts, mugs, mugs is obviously the most popular item that we have, canteens, tote bags, nothing more than that. I would say less than, you know, five to 10 SKUs is even pushing it. I'd say more like five SKUs.
Okay, but those are items that can't be purchased inside the Lorenz store?
They can, they can also, they could also be purchased inside the Ralph Lauren store, Polo store.
They can. And then I noticed there's, there's a opening on the side. I guess that would be more for the coffee, but what is the rear part that you, it's mentioned a few times, an access?
So, it looks very much like a truck. It's a, it's an old French Sichone truck. It's part of that whole Ralph Lauren and Ralph's hospitality charm that we chose that shell. But that's all it is, is a shell. We actually found a company that really, it's almost like something you'll see on TLC where they gut out the entire thing and make every square inch usable space for our baristas and cashiers and even flex people to use. So the idea is that they would enter, an employee would enter through a door on one side of the truck. They would walk in and just like you see on any type of food truck, it would be a large open counter on one side of the truck. On that exact opposite side of the truck, that would all, that would not be a window. That would be, and Ralph can speak to the materials used, but like corrugated metal on the other side of the truck. And then on the back of the truck, you're right, there is another rear flap. And how it works usually from an operating standpoint is that, and I think this was mentioned earlier, is that we use, for example, in Rockefeller Center, since it's such a highly trafficked area, we do have the use of stanchions to make sure that customers know where to line up and obviously keep all the traffic organized. The idea is then you would order at the main counter with the cashier. That order is then given to the barista, which is usually directly to the cashier's left where the espresso machine is and then hand it off. So then the person that's ordering goes from the, where they're ordering to await for their coffee to be done, which is really no more than a minute and a half, depending on the order. Some of those espresso drip based. Some of those espresso based drinks, because it's made with a La Marzocco machine, takes a bit longer because it's, you know, it's, you know, handmade. They pick up their order on a ordering count on counter right there. And that's also, you know, where they would have the milk station that they can add their own milk and sugar. That, of course, is pre-COVID times. During COVID times, the barista adds everything itself to limit the contact. So we've thought through all that.
So is it it's one line then that just moves around the truck?
That's essentially that's that's correct. And again, you know, yes, that's that's correct, one line.
Okay, now I just I'm thinking about if there's a backup as far as that, again, that ESO, that pathway that, God forbid, there's an urgency that they can get through.
Yeah, and we've 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 dealt with lots of traffic before. Like in Rockefeller Center, I don't want to keep bringing that up, but that's the best example because that has millions of footsteps. And we we operate during Christmas time there, so we're we're used to that. It doesn't do us any good when there's a huge line because we want to get the people through as fast as possible, and no one likes waiting in line. So we do have the ability to have a mobile POS where a barista or a cashier can jump out and take some orders in line to kind of speed that line through.
Okay, thank you.
The back of house.
This is Eric. I was just going to add that we actually hired or on boarded the same civil engineer that did the Woodbury Commons Mall. So when we get to the stage of bringing in any utilities to the truck, the civil engineer that did Woodbury Commons is the one that we're using for this project.
Thank you. The back of house location. Now, I guess that would just be storage of dry goods and stuff in the actual Polo building? Or would there be preparation that would take it take part in that area?
Mostly dry goods. We could do at times have offered, again, it's no baking involved, but like a yogurt parfait where we would literally just take yogurt and add fruit from the refrigerator and put it on top of it and granola, no baking. So I don't want to say completely no preparation because we've done light things like that. But we'd have refrigerator there and dry goods because you got to imagine you go through a lot of milk when you go through a coffee shop. So we need a place to store all that where some of it being stored within the truck itself and then some of the off site milk storage.
Thank you. Robert or Joe?
I have a question. Is this going to arrive preconstructed? Or is it going to be constructed on site?
Great, great question. It's a preconstructed. It's preconstructed.
Okay, and could ever be wheeled away if it had to be wheeled away? I mean, it's going to be attached to sewer lines and water and so forth, but it could be moved though if it had to.
I think if there, yes, yes, it could be moved if it had to, but it would be a professional to have to move it. Well, put it that way. I think you had a security concern earlier, and there would be no no amateur could come in there and just move this truck. But yes, and there was ever emergencies or whatever. Yes, this could be moved away, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Joe, you have any anything for the applicants?
The only real the only real part of the truck is that it has four wheels and two axles. That's it.
So it does have wheels and axles. I thought the narrative said it wouldn't.
Uh, it would mean there's no, there's literally no engine. There's no anything, but yeah, I mean.
Okay, yeah, no. All right, sorry.
There's there's no engine or internal systems or anything like that.
Gotcha.
Are there any bathroom facilities located inside the truck?
No, there's not.
Does the truck sit on its wheels? Or is there another foundation in interior to that that supports the floor?
It doesn't sit on its wheels, but we have found it. Sorry, it does sit sit on its wheels. But we have found, and actually you guys have probably liked this, but we have put basically like a box underneath it so garbage can't collect underneath it, and it's you can't see it. You'd have to really get on the ground to see it, but it's also a way to keep it, you know, garbage collecting underneath. And also from a security standpoint, you don't want people putting anything underneath.
Joe, any questions we have? No, you're good. What about you, Tommy? You're good too, Tommy? Okay.
I'm good.
Thank you, sir. So Dennis, it does sounds like we want to do an ESO referral on this, at least get a memo back from them that they're just okay. I know you also made a comment that you did a proper site plan from the applicant as well.
Right, and I think Eric indicated that they hired is a PSNS. I'm not sure they said the original. I'm not sure if it's PSNS, but whoever they've hired, if they can get a site plan to us. Okay, if you can get a site plan, because if it's PSNS, they should have the good bones, at least of a site plan handy. They may have to do a field visit, but it should be pretty pretty easy to submit. And you need to have a public hearing, which Kelly mentioned. So you'll have to schedule that, and there's a little opportunity to submit things. So, okay.
Now.
We'll talk to the SOs, yes.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. Now, Kelly, normally we have, I guess, we have the the mockup board with all the colors and stuff on it when we do public hearings. But typically, that's people can see it, touch it, look at it.
Yeah, we won't be able to do it like that. But what we could do is, again, if we do it Zoom or if we do it WebEx, and Chris, you and I can talk about that. I'm just using WebEx for an example because we're on that right now. If John Filippiano, you usually put together those boards and give the presentation. We can do our best and share the screen. We can have something submitted in hard copy, at least at Village Hall. If the board members want to stop by Village Hall, they could probably make an appointment to see it. But we could share the colors and the board on the screen as if it was one of the plans. Like the Italian restaurant that you guys did, you gave a plan for that one with the colors on it. So that's something we could put up on the screen for everybody to see.
They have submitted a booklet that does show some of those colors, and it does have the palette from what was approved previously. That's my understanding. And and that that's digital. So I mean, we could share that screen, I suppose, for the public. But the board should have received that, hopefully. Okay.
I don't have my file with me, so I'm sorry.
But that is a question that I had as far as the green. That's like a really bold green. Is that the color of the other food trucks or that was? It is.
It's the same. It's the same color.
That's a brand color.
It's the brand color. And if you guys have Instagram, there's a Ralph's Coffee Instagram that will give you the sense of a design aesthetic. And I can I can assure you guys that even though we're concerned, we're obviously very concerned about all the hop operations and everything, but everything goes through that design lens and making sure that the experience and that presence is felt. So through Ralph's very unique vision.
This is John Villapiano. I would just further add that I recognize this is still within the board's purview. However, this this truck in its proposed location within the courtyard is not visible to anybody except for pedestrians of Woodbury Common. And that's pedestrians within Woodbury Common.
Yeah, the only reason I was asking about the color, John, was because of the the navy blue that seems to be, you know, that seems to be the brand color. That's why I was surprised when I saw the green like that.
Got it, okay.
So.
All right. So John, I'm sorry, Sandy, go ahead.
No, I just was going to ask one that one other thing, only because I know, you know, years from now, the files need to be complete. Dennis, do you think that you could just get just a paragraph from from Gary about the fact that this is a kiosk? I know, I mean, I believe you 100%. It's just.
I'll ask him for his opinion writing, no problem.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Sandy. Does anybody from the planning board have anything else for the applicant or our consultants on this application? Now, we're forever hold your peace.
No, sir.
Head shaking. All right, so we could reaffirm CECA tonight, right, Kelly? There's no reason. All right, so I'll make the motion to reaffirm CECA this neck deck, right?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Sandy on the second. Any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
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 So all members of the board are in favor for reaffirming CECA. Now to the Polo and Commons crew, July 1st would be our next meeting. Now, I'm not sure if that's going to be a virtual or in person meeting yet. Depends on where we are with the state. Do you guys feel you would be able to reach out to your civil engineer and have the site plan updated? And Dennis, you would need it back by?
Well, typically, it's two weeks before, but that's not going to happen. We could, because it's July 1st meeting. But we can stretch the point. I mean, I think they should have the drawing available. John, do you know if PSNS would have this area mapped?
I can I can tell you, they they do have the area mapped in an earlier iteration with the Ralph's team. When when the truck was in another position, we actually did have PSNS lay out the the grading as well as the utility plan. So this is really, in my mind, it's a simple exercise of of the PSNS group just updating their plan with the correct location of it.
My suggestion is this, if it's okay. We normally have it two weeks in advance. This is a very small site. It's not a big site, and it's already developed. It's just looking at what's existing and how they're going to tie in. If we get it by next Wednesday, that'll be fine. It's a week in advance because we have to do our report for you that Friday. So I only have two days. So but it shouldn't be much. So if you can get it in by next Wednesday, that'd be fine. We'd be ready for the public hearing.
Kelly, you see any issues with that or it'll be okay?
No, no issues. But if it can also be submitted digitally, that way it can be uploaded as usual. And if it needs to be shared, having a shared shared screen, everybody has it to look at.
We'll make sure Maria has it.
Thank you. Chris?
Yep, Sandy.
Sorry, I did forget one thing with John. John, building number 20. What is the status of that right now? I mean, were the renovations ever done? Was it ever whatever happened with it since it was two years ago?
No, that that building hasn't been touched whatsoever. So the one of the current tenants right now is is Faragamo. And the plan, which has been delayed with all the circumstances that we're we're under right now, the plan to demolish and rebuild Suite 315, which the board approved in February of this year. That has been pushed now to an early 2021 start. And that building, we hope, will be completed and occupied by October of next year, at which point Faragamo would open their new store. We would then move to begin a our work on building 20. Exactly what that looks like right now, Sandy, I have no idea. We we may just decide to backfill the existing space in the existing building as is. So that's why we were comfortable relinquishing that approval from 2018.
Okay, so nothing has been done there then?
Absolutely nothing.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Chris.
That's okay. Anybody else? All right, so I will offer a motion to hold the public hearing on this application July 1st, contingent that the applicant has all needed information in digitally to the building department by the 24th of June.
Did you make the motion? I'm sorry.
Yes, I made the motion.
Okay, I'll second. I'm sorry.
Sandy on the second. Any good questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
So you have five eyes. All right. Thank you very much, John and company. Appreciate you working with us, especially with the rough start this evening. And we will see everybody in a couple of weeks.
All right, thank you, everyone. Again, I hope all is well. Tommy, nice to meet you virtually. Look forward to working with you. Take care, everyone. We'll we'll see you in two weeks.
Planning board, Dennis, Kelly, you guys got to hang on. We've got some more business to attend to. John, I think we're good for tonight, the rest of the local law. thank you for your help this evening. Just waiting for the rest of the crew to. Are you able to boot people, Kelly, or no?
Want to boot people?
Well, I mean, it's it's a public, I mean, it's an open meeting. They could stay if they want, right? Doesn't really matter.
Yeah, and I'm I think they're probably it's just one.
Yeah, okay. All right, so now on to the fun stuff, right? I guess we'll 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 start simple. The term limits law, introductory local law six. This has been kicked over to us by the Board of Trustees as per our village code for us to review. And if I remember, we are only looking at the text of the ZBA term limits, correct?
That is correct. That's the portion of the law that's located within the zoning code. And that portion is being referred to this board per 31052.
I don't know if there's much for us to comment on with there. It's the same thing as us. Two consecutive five year terms have to have a five year break, and then they can come back, right?
That's correct.
Say it, Sandy.
Sorry, Kelly, I just wanted to know. So if if somebody serves their 10 years, their two terms on the ZBA, they have to have a five year absence. Does that preclude them from going right to joining the planning board?
Not the way that it is written.
Okay, so they could do another five, those five years on the planning board and then go back to the ZBA?
Yes. Technically, yes. But as you know, a lot of people start on one board. Actually, a lot of people start on a zoning board and then go to a planning board. So there is that mix, but the local law does not prohibit that.
So after they complete that five year absence, the clock is reset and they can do another, they could do another two terms on the ZBA?
Yes.
I guess technically, to Sandy, they can go back and forth, right? Five years on ZBA, five years on planning, five years on ZBA, five years on planning, right? Because then they're not breaking, they're not breaking the term limits.
That's that's the only part of the plan.
I have a question for Kelly.
Yes.
Do other towns have similar laws or regulations such as term limits?
The codes that I am familiar with for certain municipalities don't. But having term limits is not something new. There are places that do have them that want they want fresh blood. So other other places have them, not the ones, not the codes that I'm thinking of right now. But there are other municipalities that have them. That was a very long winded response to say, yeah. Sorry about that, Rob.
I have another question. Do we have sufficient people that are willing to come forth and volunteer? I mean, what's the average number of people that put in their applications when there's a seat available?
I can't I can't really weigh in on that. Something more for the village clerk. But I will say that the Board of Trustees was just looking for applicants for the Comprehensive Plan Committee and a Land Preservation Committee. And I think for both boards, they had about or both committees, they had about 10 volunteers for each, which is very good. I think that there's, it seems like there's a lot of people in Woodbury that are interested in participating. And hopefully, that extends to board openings.
Okay, thank you.
I thought you did mention, though, there was like some catchall. There was if you couldn't get a member to serve for whatever reason, you could potentially go back to the bullpen.
The Board of Trustees would would have the ability to continue that during that period. I'm trying to pull it up right now to direct you. I'm trying to pull it up right now to direct you. But I mean, it's only two paragraphs long, so I think it's like smack dab in the middle of that paragraph. Let me open it. Got to get the scannable version here. It is. Vacancy on the zoning board of appeals occurring other than by expiration of a term. So basically, if there's vacancy, they can be continued in that place. Without the necessary five-year break, et cetera.
Okay. I mean, does anybody have any comments they want to pass back to the village board on this, on this section of local law? Personally, I think it's a good idea. You know, it keeps the boards fresh and which I think is good because, you know, times change, people change. And the environment changed and sometimes you need a new perspective on things. So personally, I think it's a, a good idea and I'm glad the village board is moving forward with it.
Can I make a comment? I, I, I think, I understand that. But as it is, doesn't the village trustees have complete control over renewing someone's five-year period or not at any time? I mean, and when an applicant goes forth again, they have to. Be approved by majority vote of the village board. I mean, we have the checks in place there. If they choose not to continue with someone, they have that power already.
I think they're just trying to set some expectations on time limits and they have the ability to appoint and reappoint. But this, yeah, set some expectations for somebody that is appointed.
But we, do we have that any other position in our town government or any volunteer groups that we have? I don't think we have any of that. And I don't understand why it has to be that particular thing, you know, ZBA.
Well, it's the planning board as well. It's for both, the planning board and ZBA.
For both, alright. But still, there's, there's that control factor that the village board, you know, has the authority of approving someone's term or not.
Well, again, I think it encourages fresh blood. I know there's a few municipalities upstate that, that have it. And I think it does encourage, at least from when I started on the ZBA to now. I think it's, I think it encourages either new community members, new residents, as well as younger people to, to get involved. And, you know, so with the five-year absence, if, if there's a person that still wants to do it after five years, then so be it. But again, it just gives the opportunity, I think, for more, for younger people and newer community residents to become involved in a, you know, pretty important volunteer position.
Yeah, and it's a position that requires a lot of commitment. You know, there are a lot of man-hours that are put into ZBA or the planning board.
So does the board want me to put together, or Dennis, sorry, to put together a report? Darn it, sorry Dennis. Natalie's not here for me to say, Natalie.
This one, this one would probably come from you, Kelly, because, I mean, it's not engineering in this one. The other one's a bigger one, but go ahead.
I'll let you take the other one. I'll take this one. It sounds like the board finds this satisfactory, but are there any other comments that you would like me to provide to the board?
I just think that there's been turnovers in both boards. I mean, when I started in 2012, there's not an original member left there. There's been constant turnovers. And new members and fresh members.
Do you find out a bad thing?
No, I don't find a bad thing at all, but I think it just occurs naturally and, and the checks are already in place. I find this unnecessary. And why create something that could come back and haunt us and be a problem someplace down the road? It's a possibility.
Why? What, what, I don't see any haunting down the road.
Term limits start. Let's say there's a lack of volunteers in the future. You know, so like for example.
Well, I think they address the lack of volunteers in the future. If there isn't somebody to fill the position, the board has the right to reappoint somebody that's already been there for 10 years.
Well, then we better put them in the code then.
It is in the code, isn't it?
There, what it says is that they're allowed to continue if there's a vacancy. But really, it would come down to the Board of Trustees, you know, making a determination on somebody to sit on the board. To respond to Joe's question, I think they. Correct me if I'm misunderstanding you. Basically, when does this law take effect? Is it retroactive to current board members and their current terms? I'm not sure. That is an issue that has come up and we're looking into that and how the Board of Trustees wants to address that.
So like a grandfathering?
Yeah, like does it, does, if you've been on the board for nine years, do we count those nine years or is it going forward? And it's something that the Board of Trustees has talked about? I just don't have a resolution for you if that's what Joe's question was.
That was my question, and I was curious to see if it starts now or if it, you know, you count the nine years. So when, is that part of something we get to decide on or is that just the trustees?
That would be the trustees, but I can certainly put in the report to the Board of Trustees that you're in favor of. Essentially, as Sandy put it, grandfathering and the effective date of the law being going forward and not including terms that have already occurred.
I think that would be a fair compromise. Otherwise, I think, you know, if you get nine years, you got one year left and you're done.
Robert, just one quick point to, to your point before. Although you're putting term limits in, I don't know how many times it'll be kicking in because I've been serving this board for over 30 years. I don't think, I, maybe there's one or two that stayed more than 10 years. I can't really recall that many. I think maybe Sheila did and there might be one or two others. Was he over 10 years on one board?
I think he was like 25 years, wasn't he?
Oh, on the ZBA?
Oh, he came from the ZBA.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't know that it was that long. I'm just, I just, I'm trying to recall, there's been quite a few board members that have worked with. And I just, from the practical standpoint, it may not kick in that much, but just for whatever that's worth.
So it sounds like we, it's, we're in agreement, but we should, one, one of our comments would be that the grandfathering should be written into the law. Or figured it, or figured out before it goes into effect.
Yeah, they have to detail it to, to make sure that, you know. It just can't, you just can't say grandfather and you have to put the details with it.
Right, we, we would adequately define that how the Board of Trustees wants. Sorry, I had to plug in.
It's okay. Is, is that, is that better, Rob, if we send over that comment, a comment with that?
I think so, because I think you would be creating an ex post facto situation after the fact that this was the law and then the law changed in a sense or the code changed. I, I think that would be good.
So. Does anybody have any else they want to include for comments for the village board on this local law before we get to the, the real potatoes? Going once, going twice, three times a lady? Alright, Dennis. You gonna, you gonna read us your whole memo?
No, I'm gonna try to summarize a few things. Okay, this is local law number one of 2018. This is the water quality overlay it's proposed. The trustees are revisiting the local law that was introduced back in 2018. You considered this previously. Most of this board considered this recent, this previously. And we wrote a letter on your behalf about your discussions and it included comments by Burke, Millie, Golden and Norton. It included comments of the board and it included some of the things that we saw and we attached that to our memo. Don't think a lot of those things have changed. I think they're still on the table for review by the Board of Trustees as to whether they want to make those changes. So we didn't go through all of those again in our memo, other than to say that they were attached. You could take a look at those. But the comments that we had before were for a number of things that you considered necessary changes. One was the, the highway department's practices of snow removal now. When snow gets accumulated too much along the main streets of Woodbury, the highway department puts it in trucks and moves it over to the yard for melting over there. If you read the code, it says that you can't move, you can't transport materials. I think they meant into or out of the village. But that should be clear and we just don't want to have it, you didn't want to have it inconsistent with the highway practices.
Dennis, I think not just the highway practices. I know there's at least two resolutions that I've been on the board since that require site plan. With site plan approval, that requires the removal of snow if it becomes too heavy as well. I think we just did it with the, the building on Estrada. Central Valley Properties. They're required to remove the snow from the property.
And you're right, if they move it out of the village, I'm not sure if that's a violation, but if they took it, they moved it within the village, then it would be the same thing as the highway department and that could be, that could pose a problem. And, you know, frankly, maybe it's something that we need to do is, if it's to be transported out, it has to be done in accordance with a disposition plan or something like that. So we know that they're not taking it and dumping it into Woodbury Creek or some other avenue where the salt could, could accumulate or could rapidly dispose into an area that's recharge area. So yes, that, that was something and I think it's still on the table to be considered. You had concerns regarding the ability to maintain, that's mow and fertilize existing lawns within the riparian zones. The riparian zones say you can't clear any vegetation. Well, you had discussion that someone could have a cultured lawn going right up to the stream bank now and many do. In many locations, as you know, Park Avenue up 105, the tributary comes down and some, almost the entire yard is within the 50-foot riparian zone. So that was something you had suggested previously. I think that's still on the table. It's up to you, but I think that might still be on the table. The planning board, I think, was asking for consideration of some exemptions based upon your review of existing conditions. There is some language in the law that does provide some of that for you, but I think that was something we noted to them previously. And the consideration of the applicability of applications currently before the board in terms of grandfathering, just what you talked about before. If, are, what applications are to be grandfathered, if any, and what are the milestones? Is it if they made an application, if they received preliminary approval, if, if they've received billing permit? Or what would be the milestone that would trigger in grandfathering and not having to go back on an application to consider the conditions for this, for this proposed law? Okay, now, I'm not going to read through this, but I will tell you this. There are three different principal areas in this law. They're talking about the overlay zone. And the overlay zone is, is essentially all the property within the village of Woodbury, except the state parks and the military reservation. It's anything that goes into the aquifer for the Woodbury Creek and the Ramapo. And there are some exemptions in here if someone can prove that it doesn't go into those areas, but that's going to be few and far between. Basically, those, that's where the water goes when it goes in, even if it goes into rock fissures and comes down, it's in that aquifer. So the overlay zone applies to essentially all the properties, except for those ones, those three that I mentioned. The, but the prohibited, prohibited activities in the overlay zone are not onerous, in my opinion. I mean, it's up to you, but they are logical things. So you can't dispose or discharge solid liquid waste unless you have approval from the health department or someone, or the building inspector, the planning board or DEC. There's no outdoor storage permitted for chemicals and hazardous materials and petroleum products. I mean, those are things I think that you would want to do, whether you have the overlay or not. So it seems like reasonable things. The underground storage of petroleum products except is approved by DEC. So someone can do that as long as they get DEC approval. One of the questions that I think Kelly's office brought up previously was that what do we do about all the tanks that are buried out there now that people don't even know they have? Or, or they don't, may not have DEC approval or anything like that. That is an issue. And whether that's grandfathered or how you treat those.
Question with that, maybe it's an asset or county thing. I thought when we're transferring deed on a property, you actually have to sign an affidavit saying that all underground oil storage has been abandoned, removed and probably mitigated.
When you sell your property, I think there's something like that. I'm not sure if it's for just the fuel delivery, but if it is. I'm not sure of that. Chris, I gotta take a look.
I was just curious because.
When you sell. I know, yeah, I'm pretty sure it's when you sell. I just, I know a couple of people that sold their homes that did have underground oil tanks at one time and they had to sign an affidavit before the bank would even, you know, allow the mortgage for the buyer.
Correct, and I think that's when it comes up. That's the occasions when I've heard it coming up from people that I know and people that have contacted us or firm to take, do investigations. It's, it has been either upon a resale or a refinance. I think it comes up in refinance as well.
But it doesn't come up if there's a foreclosure and like the county takes it over and then sells it? And I know this because we actually had another municipality purchase property that had been foreclosure for use as a parking lot. And it turned out that there were three underground tanks and then they had to pay to have those removed. So just wanted to throw in my two cents on that one.
Well, it is something then that you would want to consider how you want to handle this and maybe a heads up to the trustees because I don't think they want to create problems for, you know, folks, but they do want to protect your water supply. So there is, you know, two things working here. One is the protection of the water supply and the other is not trying to create an undue burden on people that may have a tank like that. But at some point, you know, if the tank's leaking, then somebody ought to address it. So anyway, that is one of the things that is prohibited in the overlay zone. There are some actual uses that are prohibited. One is mining and the others are junkyards and refuse stumps. Those are prohibited, but I think they're prohibited anyway now. But existing facilities that are there, they can continue to operate as long as they have valid permits and they're non-conforming uses. But they must file a water pollution control plan within one year after adoption of the law. Quite frankly, that's, I think, a good thing. It's something you'd probably want to endorse if someone's running an operation like that. They should do the thing. And the water pollution control plan simply says you have to identify the hazardous materials that are on the property. Identify how you're controlling them or how you will control them and have an emergency response plan. To me, it sounds like it's a reasonable exercise of government regulation.
So that would be on even, on existing facilities?
Yes. Well, there are none that are allowed, so there won't be any more unless they come in through the ZBA. And so the existing ones, yes, they, they would have to file those plans.
We only have what, one junkyard, right Sandy?
Yeah, I think Nationwide, down by Nationwide is, but as far as, as far as.
Mining operation too, I think.
Yeah, Highland Sand and Gravel, right?
It's not Highland Sand and Gravel, Space Island or something like that.
So they would both then have to file this plan?
Right, and I, I wouldn't be surprised that they have something similar. Maybe, I, I don't know about Mustafa down at Nationwide, he may. But the mining, they're going for a permit right now from the DEC and I'm sure they have at least the bones of a plan like that put together in, in the applications that they made to the DEC. So again, I don't think it's onerous. I think it's good planning. So also in the overlay zone is the bulk salt through deicing chemical storage must be in protective structures, which is reasonable. And then the one that, that you commented on last time is the transportation into and deposit of snow contaminated with salt. Now, if it's only the transportation into the area, transferring it between the areas wouldn't be a violation. But it says into and deposit of snow. So depends how you interpret that. If you pick it up, you have to deposit it. So if you deposit it in the aquifer overlay zone, then it would fall into this regulation. So I think that's just something that needs clarification. That's the overlay zone. That applies to everybody. Again, happy to answer your questions, but I don't see anything in there being terribly onerous unless you do. Or if you want more regulation, you can recommend it, but I think that these things seem like good planning, just my opinion.
Dennis, can I just ask you a question on number five? Would that, would that include tracking?
I don't know, because that's an existing, I think fracking is for existing, no, I don't know. If you have to drill?
Yeah.
If you have to drill, I think it would fall into that.
Okay, so that, well, that's what I was wondering, because isn't fracking when they drill and they shoot?
I'm not sure if it's always drilling or if you can use existing pre-drilled and then frac those wells to withdraw someplace else from a well, but if you have an area that you need, you're formulating something and I don't want to give you too much in that, because I really am not a fracking expert, but I think if it involves drilling for oil and gas, it's prohibited.
Okay.
I have a question on number two. Do storage of chemicals. Take a fuel oil company that just leaves their trucks parked out in the parking lot of their establishment, or a roofing company that leaves tar, you know, the solid, the liquid tar in the hot pots outside. Now, that stuff's not being stored in a building. So are they still going to be allowed to leave those trucks and those hot pots and stuff out in their parking lot? That they have to put them in a building that could potentially contain a spill from those?
I don't know, that's a good question. I see that it says that outdoor storage is prohibited, but except in protective structures approved by the building inspector. Now, whether a tanker truck would be considered a protective, but the word structure, and maybe you should say structure or vessel, because I would think that those trucks which are allowed to drive on our highways all over everything, over bridges, into hospitals, into everywhere we have, you know, facilities and uses, I think that they've been designed as protective structures. But it's, our definition of structure may be something with a foundation, I'm not sure, I'd have to look if we have a definition, but maybe you should say protective structures or tanks.
Or DOT approved storage, storage containers, vessels. I would just hate to see a local oil company or company have to go and put a building up just to park a truck inside to, you know.
Understood.
Comply with, when the DOT already says it's okay to keep fuel oil in that kind of stuff already. I just don't want to see us put an undue burden on the local business owner for something like that.
Very good, I'll make a note of that. Okay, so we've talked about the overlay zone. Then there are two other areas of concern within the code that fall within your review authority later on when this comes back to you. One is buffer zones and a buffer zone is all lands within 100 feet or a stream or water body that is on a map that the building department is going to hold. That map was produced by GIS from Orange County. We worked on it a little bit, adding certain things that the board of trustees wanted. I think there were a couple of different water bodies that they wanted included or, and it's basically the streams that are tributary to Woodbury Creek and to the Ramapo and that come out of reservoirs, areas where the reports by USGS and other engineers and hydrogeologists have determined are areas of recharge to your aquifers. And so that map has been produced and that, there are certain things that are prohibited within 100-foot zone. And one, and again, these are things that might not be that unreasonable. The burial of human remains within 100 feet of the stream or water body and no animal feedlots, manure, storage, or chemical storage are permitted within that 100-foot area. The only thing I would say is, I noticed this when I was preparing for this meeting, is that no animal feedlots, manure, storage, or chemical storage, we might want to have to address existing facilities that might be in that zone. And if it was, I think we'd probably do the same thing that's done for the other facilities. I talk about mining and junkyards, is that they should do a water pollution control plan for those. And if you agree with that, I could put that in the comments to the board, because I think that's something you might want to have.
Water pollution control plans are yearly, they have to get filed, or is it once and done?
I think they're filed one year after, and I'm not sure if it has anything about updates. It certainly wouldn't necessarily need to be yearly. I mean, I do vulnerability assessments for water systems, which is mandated by the health department, and the requirement there is that the emergency response plan and the vulnerability assessment plan be updated every five years. So I would think something on that order.
Do expansions or if there's any like purpose area, that would raise a question, or would they be permitted to do so before they brought a condition to a better place? Does that make sense?
Expansions of non-conforming uses aren't permitted, Kelly can chime in on this, aren't permitted by right, and even with the site plan, they have to go to the ZBA, I think, initially, and they have to get that. And then any other conditions that are attached, which could be an updating of the pollution control plan and anything else, you know, you might want to suggest. I'm sorry, Joe, did I address your question?
Yeah, I make sure if they're non-conforming or if they're in creating a situation that we're trying to correct, that we have a little more power to say, we need to bring this up to better standards. That's what I was asking for.
Yes, and I think, quite frankly, when Highland Sand and Gravel came in and they wanted to expand and do different things, the board took that opportunity to address a number of environmental issues and to try to get them to bring it up to speed. So in practice, what you're asking for, I've seen happen, that's general norm. Okay, so those are the buffer zone, those are the only two things that buffer zones say per se that are prohibited in addition to the things in the overlay zone. However, when you get to the buffer zone, it triggers a number of things that an applicant must do for you to satisfy you in a special permit application. And that's another matter I'll go with you in a second, but there are a whole host of things that they have to do in connection with satisfying you, that they've minimized the disruption and they've tried to maximize the use of their property outside the buffer zone to the extent practicable. And that language in there, sometimes it's good and sometimes it may leave you with a question about what your authority is and you may want to have more clarification or not. That's within the board's discretion, but I advise you that when it comes to buffer zones, there are a number of things here you're going to have to look at and applicants are going to have to satisfy you, they've satisfied those conditions in the, in this overlay zone. Those are not prohibitions, those are simply things that they're supposed to try to work out of that zone and if they are going to work inside that zone, they have to satisfy you that they've done their best and that the detriment to the community as a whole would be greater than allowing them to go into that buffer area. I think that's the language or something similar to that they have in there. So that's the buffer zone. Then the last section in this is on the riparian zone. And this is the lands within 50 feet of a stream or water body. And just so you understand this, if you have a stream or water body, it's 50 feet on both sides, so it's 100 feet going down and basically 100 feet is probably close to all the lanes on the throughway. So it's not a small little thing, okay? It is a substantial area, but it's based on scientific evidence that a certain buffer next to a stream is necessary to prevent pollutants from running in there, trying to trap those pollutants, capture them so they can be purified and they can be soaked into the ground, they don't go into the waterways. And so there is substantial evidence that this is positive for your aquifer protection. So in that area of the riparian zone, no fertilizers, pesticides, herbicides, or manure may be applied. That's a blanket statement, all right? Now, I mentioned to fact to you, there are certain properties where their entire yard or most of their yard is in the riparian zone. And these existing homes have lawns right now. You might want to think about how you handle that in terms of, they have, there are environmentally, well, there are more environmentally friendly fertilizers that could be applied. As far as pesticides and herbicides, I don't want to pretend I'm an expert, but I assume that there are some that are more environmentally friendly than others. So I just mentioned to you, it's an issue that you may see from homeowners that have this, and it may be difficult for enforcement for Gary. The other prohibition, other prohibitions in the riparian zone are removal of vegetation that has not already been cleared except dead and dangerous trees upon approval of the building inspector. That's not so bad, I mean, it protects that area and there's an exemption there through Gary if there's a dangerous tree or something like that. And then the last one on this is land disturbance in unpaved areas except for flagpoles, signs, and security lights, necessary stream bank or shoreline stabilization, unless approved by the building inspector with consultation of the village engineer. So you're not supposed to disturb anything in there that's not paved, unless you get approval and I guess this puts the onus on Gary and I to make sure that it's essential. Now, obviously, we would let someone go in there if it was unstable and there was, you know, soil, turbid water going into the stream and they wanted to plant it, you know, native species of plants or whatever, something along those lines, to try to help protect from runoff. But other than that, that's the only thing it says. Then the last thing in the report was, we talked about the planning board's review of applications in the future and things that you might want to consider that might, that will come back to you when you review applications. There's a section in there that grants the planning board authority to reconcile disparities in the code with the overlay and the underlying zone, because you may see, you know, if you create an overlay zone on top of underlying zoning regulations, Kelly does a great job in checking the two, but we could miss something, okay? And so if it comes to that, it doesn't have to go to Gary, which is the normal thing, and then it wouldn't, it doesn't have to go to the ZBA, well, Kelly can chime in what it actually does. It looks like it gives you the original authority to reconcile disparities. If there's a dispute, then I suppose, Kelly, does it go to the ZBA if there's a dispute?
Sorry, I was muted. Right now, it goes to the planning board. If there's a dispute or something like that, it would likely go to the building inspector for a determination and then be appealed to the ZBA. But it gives this board some leeway in that regard.
Okay.
Dennis?
Yes.
Can I just ask you something? And it falls in line with that, with the net lot area, if this passes and saves an application that we realize, you know, has a riparian zone, say it's, you know, around the body of water or whatever, does that affect the net lot area?
Good question. Net lot area would only be affected by the things that are in the net lot area definition. If it doesn't say riparian zones, I don't know if it would go out. It does say areas flooded and inundated with a certain recurrence interval storm, I recall. I don't think it used the word riparian and I don't know if it uses buffer either, but it's a very good question. I'll take a look back on the definition of net lot area, but I don't recall that being in there. I recall areas flooded, I require streams, I recall the slopes, easements and rights of way are excluded, but I don't recall it saying riparian zones.
So, so in a, if a applicant came before as, for say residential houses and a good portion of their land that they want to use is in the buffer zone or the riparian zone, it's not going to affect, affect anything really?
Well, it will affect, to a certain extent, but what it would do is probably what the law envisions that it does. It would require that they put their actual development area with roads, structures, that sort of thing, in the locations that are away from the 100-foot buffer and the riparian area. And so the 100-foot buffer and riparian area would be their open space, their green space. That would be, they're only allowed a certain percentage of coverage. All that coverage would be between, if I can envision this, a roadway going, you know, north and south, a stream going north and south next to it. All the development would take place closer to the roadway side in there and you would have basically an open area to the stream. That's the way I would envision.
But if that puts them then in setback, you know, if they have a setback problem, say it's too close to the road.
There are a number, there are a number of things that affect you in the number of units that you can build. One is your net lot area, because they're only allowed a certain amount of density. Then the other thing is the practical ability to situate houses on the remaining parcel. And the last thing is that that buffer zone, and this is where it gets tricky, that buffer area, there's discretion for the planning board within the buffer area. And if they can prove to you that the, let's say the land is not giving its a reasonable value, and there's something in there that I was surprised to see in the law, Kelly, you may have noticed it too, it talks about a taking of property because of that particular situation. See if I can find the section on it. When the planning board has jurisdiction, now this is under the section for the riparian zone. When the planning board has jurisdiction for review and approval over a project in the riparian zone for streams and water bodies other than reservoirs, the planning board must determine after opportunity for public hearing that either A, there is no practical alternative to realize a compelling need of the community related to health, safety, and welfare of persons and property therein, which need outweighs the loss of protection of the water supply, or B, such land disturbance is necessary to avoid the likelihood that substantially all uses for which the property is zoned and suitable are precluded so as to deny the owner of, owner all economically beneficial or productive use of the property akin to a regulatory taking of the property. That language is something I haven't seen in zoning normally, but it does put upon you, if you had an application of the type we're talking about, you would need to make a decision as to whether the encroachment into the riparian zone would have a damage, sufficient damage to the stream and the loss of property use would be so great that you should allow that. And it's something that you would have to consider, receiving advice from your planner and from us and from Kelly. But, I mean, the law gives you some authority to take a look at that and see what's reasonable in that area. So.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. A few other things. There is a section in there that authorizes the building inspector in consultation with the village engineer to exclude areas from the requirements of the overlay district if it's proven that waters do not drain into water bodies regulated by the local law. Quite frankly, I see that having very limited application because of the area of your aquifers. But nevertheless, I'll let you know that it's in there, so if someone can make a reasonable argument there and they're really not in this and they prove it to Gary and I, then they would not come before you on that. That wouldn't apply. Section, I don't want to give you the references because they're hard, but this is under section F and subsections. Authorizes the planning board to decide if proposed development within a riparian zone is necessary because of the needs of the community outweigh the need for protection of a water body or if the restrictions of the overlay district render a property unusable by a property owner. That's the one I just read to you, that full section. But that's in essence what it does. And this one, we said, you may wish, our comment was, you may wish to consider whether this section provides enough guidance for you to decide and implement restrictions on the applications of the riparian zone or whether you want further guidance. If you think that that's adequate for you and maybe, then we'll handle the applications as they come and review it under that section of the code.
Hi Dennis?
Yes.
I think we need more structure on that. It makes me uncomfortable to have that leeway. An applicant could use it to their advantage and claim it's for the good of the community when it may not necessarily be. I mean, to me, the most important thing is protecting our waters. That comes first in my mind. So I mean, if we could structure that a little bit more, I mean, it's just a little bit too much give and take in that.
Okay, we can try. I could tell you it's a difficult balancing act because of just what you said. The riparian zone is important. You are, or the Board of Trustees is considering passing a law just to do that, to protect that important zone, okay? This, but it's difficult in planning to put something and say that something will never come up that might have certain aspects that would indicate a planned and careful excursion into the riparian zone might be better than the alternative. If you don't have it and it doesn't fall with you, then it gets this ping pong thing between you and the ZBA and back and forth and whatnot. So you might want to still have some, have it here, but I don't think you're saying you don't want, you just want to have some further guidance on that, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I, we'll work on that.
And Dennis, the other thing you mentioned about the buffer zone, about human remains, could we also include animal remains? I mean, we have the coverall bases in a sense, case there was something like that.
Yeah, I suppose you could.
I mean, one could be just as contaminating as the other.
Okay.
And Dennis, on the section A2, I'd like us to work out or define the procedure a little bit better. I know it says right now, grants the planning board authority to reconcile disparities. I'd like to, I know Kelly, you said it could either go to Gary or go to the ZBA. Can we work out or spell out that, you know, they have to either go to the, they have to go to the ZBA and then appeal the ZBA's position to the, the billing inspector or that they can go to?
I think it should be clarified so that it's clear. If there is this confusion amongst all of us as to the proper procedure, it should probably be a little bit more direct. So Dennis, if you can note that, we'll make sure to work on revision.
Very good. Okay, other things, section G, it provides guidelines for planning board review of applications for development within the buffer zone. And again, the section details requirements that the applicant must demonstrate prior to approval. And I think it's useful during a review of applications for establishing a standard for the applicants, but you should review whether there are any other requirements you would expect all applicants to comply with when reviewing applications in the buffer zone or if greater discretion is required. For example, requirements to maintain the area in its approved condition. For example, let's say you let them go into that area, but you want to require something that they show how they're going to maintain it. They have a maintenance plan, for example. Also, the authority to inspect, I don't know if this is, if we need to say this in the law or if that just comes under the billing department's authority, but if you're going to require that they do something and maintain it within the buffer zone and you've approved something based on that, I think you're going to want to be sure that they're maintaining it because it would have deleterious impacts on your aquifer, your streams, if you don't.
I think personally, it should be like with a special permit that's up for yearly or potentially up for yearly review based on a report from the building inspector, that if their failure to maintain sends them back to the planning board for the...
Exactly, the next point is the renewal of a special permit, how you want to handle that. You have, you've done a good thing, I think, recently with your special permits, and that is that the way that Kelly's office has crafted the resolution condition, any special permit that you think is of particular significance, I mean, I think there all are, but ones that you're concerned about, that they may not be implemented properly, what you have done is you've required that you receive a physical or a report, a written report, from the building inspector after one year to see if they are complying. And then if they are, that the permit is annually renewable after that automatically, except if you get a complaint from the building department. That's worked well for us in, for you in applications where you were concerned whether you were going to get compliance, the applicant's unnoticed, they're going to be inspected, and that anytime in the future, even if that inspection is good, Gary can bring them back to you if they don't continue to maintain it the way it's supposed to be maintained. So I think that's, that would work well for you. The last section that I talked about here, G1, is it broadens your authority to require stormwater pollution control plans in buffer areas, even if it's not required by the DEC in stormwater regulations. Simply by virtue of its size, it may not fall under a significant development, and it might not require a permit. So if it's 0.9 acres, it may not require a full SWIP, whereas if it was one acre, it would require a SWIP. I mean, the DEC had to cut it off at some point, and they did. But in this particular case, you're close, the reason it's a buffer area is you are within 100 feet of a stream. It has certain higher levels of potential impact, so having a requirement for a SWIP, not a requirement, an authority to require one makes sense, and I think it's beneficial under the right circumstances. And I don't know why I'm dwelling on it since I'm simply endorsing it, so. Anyway, that's my comments. I'm sorry it's so lengthy. This is a comprehensive law, and the reason I think, you know, it got, maybe it got put back, I don't know fully all the reasons, but it does have implications throughout the village, both from a protection standpoint and from an impact standpoint in terms of property. So it certainly is worthy of your consideration, your thought, and I'm sure the Board of Trustees wants to get it right. And so whatever comments you have, I'm sure they'll consider them.
Dennis, I looked at something about stormwater pollutants. I found that there's sediments, trash, bacteria, oil and grease, hydrocarbons, toxic chemicals, chloride, nutrients, and it also elevates the water temperature of water bodies, you know, like the water that comes off maybe, you know, blacktop and so forth. So I think that's very important to consider that in this overall view of things.
Absolutely. And quite frankly, I mean, I broke into this industry in wastewater treatment and that sort of thing environmentally there. And we first, through the EPA, started working at point sources, which were wastewater discharges from a pipe, all right? Because that was the biggest bang for the buck. If you could fix that, you could fix a lot. And then we went on to other things, and stormwater management was another one. And you have certain things from stormwater management, whereas you collect water, you now you put it into a retention pond, and then you have a point discharge from that, but you also have overland flow, which is not a point discharge, it's another type of discharge into the streams. This riparian zone, this buffer area protects that sheet flow that goes into streams and that sort of thing, and provides a filtering mechanism through the vegetation that's there. So, yes, this is a good thing.
Now, this won't prevent the highway department from using salt and calcium chloride and all that other fun stuff, right? You know, if they go down 105 and they put salt down, that salt's going to wash into, you know, the roadbed on the side.
Salts and chlorides are a major problem from salting on the roads. We have, there's programs now for what's called sensible salting. When you see them applying a brine mixture before the storm, you've got, there's a storm that night and you see them spraying down the brine on the highways. That's done with the intent of reducing the amount of salt that's used. Salt does have significant impact on our aquifers. There are a number that I'm, I'm working on, that I work on, that have been impacted, and they've been shut down because the chlorides go above 250 parts per million. I think in Harriman, they have a prohibition on many of their roads in terms of where you can apply salt, and you'll see some signs down there. Well, I've talked to Gary, not to Gary, but Rob about this. I mean, he's trying to exercise sensible salting and do, doing what he can. One of the problems we have in our area is the throughway is really big on salt and some of the streams in the Ramapo, for example, which parallels the throughway for 20 miles, gets an awful lot of discharge, and the wells in Suffolk have been impacted. I know the Spring Valley wells are starting to be elevated. So, that's a long answer to your question, you got me excited on the topic. They're working. Is that, yes, salting is a problem, but Gary's, Rob is trying to maintain that properly. It doesn't prevent that, all it does is says you can't move it into and deposit it. So Rob does, he doesn't move it into, but he does deposit it in some areas, and that's for safety of the public. And it goes into the same aquifer. If it melts on 32, it goes into the drainage ways, seeps into the ground and goes to the Woodbury Creek. If he brings it up to his yard to melt, it's going to go down into the ground there or maybe find its way over to the 105 drainage, which is basically runs right to the Woodbury Creek. So that's what it changes, if you will, just that into or out of requirement.
Okay, I just want to make sure with that word deposit, we don't end up tying his hands and someone ends up jumping up and down going, well, putting salt down is depositing, and you're not allowed to do that anymore because we just put the old one...
That we recommended to the board was actually that they reach out to, to the highway department just to consider language that's compatible with the highway department's current maintenance practices, and then see if there's, they can see if there's any improvement. Obviously, if Rob is already taking those improvement actions, it would just really be bringing the law in compliance so that they're compatible with what the village does.
Now, I was just going to say, we can't really do anything about the state, like on Route 32, that's done by the state, and that, that all drains into catch basins, which is untreated and drains into the different bodies of water.
Not for this board, but there are some things like that in the works, just to let you know. I mean, I, I joined a meeting, I asked for a meeting with Rockland County Health Department, and they spearheaded it with the state, with the county, and with the throughway. And the state and the county were terrific as far as sensible salting, agreeing to change their practices, the throughway not so much. But people change and departments change attitudes. I haven't had a meeting in a while, and I haven't done it through the Orange County Health Department, but that's something that could be done, it would be offline, it wouldn't be a planning board issue, but it would be a water supply issue, and it's probably a good one to start.
Okay, thank you.
Now, Kelly, what prevents somebody, their housing developments in front of us, and we tell them, you know, you have to change the site plan because of the riparian zone or the buffer zone, from going to the ZBA and just being like, listen, they're not allowing me, they're not giving, you know, they're taking away my right to build on my land. You know, I have a right to build here and I have a right to, you know, make it, they're just, you're basically taking my land from me and just going to the ZBA and getting a variance and just bypassing all this.
Well, there's two points there, actually. One of them Dennis raised earlier, which was the provision about takings. I, we didn't draft the law when it was first put together, but my belief after reviewing it is that that provision was put in there so that there couldn't be a taking claim, the one that gives the planning board some leeway. But a member of the public certainly has the ability, as they do with any provision of the zoning code, to go to the ZBA. And then it would be up to the ZBA to either, if they're looking for an area variance from 50 feet to 45 feet, whatever it may be, they can seek that variance from them, and the board would just have to do the five-part balancing test. Or if for some reason they were trying to do a use variance, that's obviously a different test, it's four parts, but if you, it's not a balancing test, if you fail one, you don't get it. But the way the Constitution and the state, and as Rick would go into the history of laws in New York, there is meant to be that built-in relief. And then that's why the board appoints, you know, members of the ZBA, and the ZBA just has to balance the factors that are in front of them.
I just, it's, this is a great law, there's a lot of meat behind it. I just, you know, Rick gave me that whole history lesson one morning, and, you know, I just hate to be able to, somebody just be like, nope, we're just going to go to the ZBA and be like, we're going to get a variance and call it a day.
That's where the ZBA can come in and say, you know, here are the reasons why it should be less than what you're asking for. Instead of, you know, 50 feet to 20 feet, we think 45 feet is appropriate. You know, they, they have that ability to then just also deny the variance. I mean, variances aren't, they don't have to be always granted, and people often have that misconception, but they're not always granted.
Dennis, I had a question. As far as water, water bodies, I see a lot of different bodies of water identified in here, but I don't see anything about like Cromwell Lake. Does Cromwell Lake drain into anything? Or is it just, I don't mean just lightweight, but it's a secondary water source for...
It was a part of the water department, there was a water treatment plan up there.
It's considered in the definition of reservoir, so anytime reservoir is used in the law, it includes Cromwell Lake.
Oh, Cromwell Lake is a reservoir?
Well, that's, that's the way it's, reservoir is defined.
Okay.
I understand that there are two reservoirs, Earl and Cromwell.
Yes. Okay. And what about, there's that other, that small lake?
Shadow Lake?
Is it Shadow that's on the Schlesinger proper, or is it Schlesinger? It's out off of, between Kenny Monk and where those three big properties are that we're looking at? Is that Shadow?
I believe so.
Okay. That's considered a water body because it drain, it empties into Woodbury Creek?
Okay.
The, actually empties into Cromwell Lake. If you, if you Google Earth it, according to Google Earth, it's got a little tributary, I guess it would be.
Okay.
My Earth science is a little off, but it's got a little blue line that has it going into Cromwell Lake.
So then what would that be considered?
It's a water body.
Just a water body, okay. Okay.
Now, what phase of applications would this, would this take effect on? Or is that something we should be commenting back to the village board on?
That's something you should comment back to the village board. Right now, it does not have any grandfathering provisions or anything like that included into it. So if you have an opinion or you want to provide an opinion through the village board, I think that would be a good time for that.
I, my two cents would be anything that's, only things that have been approved through CICA already.
I would agree with that.
Tommy, Joe?
Done the secret review, and we've, and we've, that we've already done a secret review on it.
Yeah.
All right. So the applications where secret has been concluded would be the ones...
Yeah, sorry, thank you.
Okay.
Rob, how are you with that?
Oh, I'm fine, yes.
Joe? No?
I got a glass of water and you guys ask me questions.
It's amazing, you turned your video off too. Oh, wow, Dennis, 1980 called, they want their mug back.
Yeah. It's older than that.
I'm all for protecting the waterways and waterways, that's great, this is good.
No, we were saying though, that anything that we concluded CICA on would be grandfathered, I guess, out of, or not having to abide by.
Apply to comply with this local law.
Yeah.
Anything currently under secret.
Where secret's completed.
So we have all those bigger projects in front of us right now that CICA hasn't been concluded on yet, that would have to abide by this.
And it would be anybody that... Yeah, it would be anybody that has either, based on your discussions, received a negative declaration that concludes secret, or if they had gotten a positive declaration, you've issued a finding statement. Those, that would be considered completion of secret. Some of the bigger projects that you have now, like Phase 5 of Woodbury Common or the Gardens at Harriman, right now, those two just have a scoping document. So that wouldn't be considered completion of secret.
I agree.
Tommy? Here for the ride?
I'm muted, I'm muted, Tommy, I'm sorry. I muted you, I'm getting a little bit of feedback.
Oh, you have feedback for me?
Yeah, I don't know why.
All right. No, I'll go along with the, I'll go along with the general consensus there.
You got to note about spelling out the whole section A dot two to make that a little bit more black and white, not so gray, about the escalation procedure there. Yeah, grants planning board authority.
Yes.
There was some, you know, does it go to Gary, does it go to the ZBA? There was some, you know, does it go to Gary? Does it go to the ZBA after us? I think we probably wanted to go to the ZBA and then to Gary ultimate, I guess, or would Gary's ZBA would be the best way to work that. Probably ZBA.
Gary to ZBA. That way, ZBA, then if there is another issue, it could go for Article 78.
Okay. And the the buffer zone is from the shore bank, correct? It's not a center line drawn down the water lake?
That is based on the definition and I can lay my hands on it. It says, the buffer area is all lands within 100 feet of a stream or water body in the overlay district. It does not define that. And the repairian zone is lands within 50 feet of a stream or water body. I think we had something on that. I gotta take a look at which memo was in. But that can be defined as the center line of the stream, which really isn't a great one if you really want to protect 50 feet because of the streams are wide, you're not going to pick that up. It could be the top of bank. I've seen it many times as the high water mark, but that's very hard to define. You may want to just do it from the top of bank, but no greater than so many feet, just in case you have a long, flat area. There are some areas of Woodbury Creek, I think over by the trailer park, gets it's not so defined, if you will.
Yeah, well, that's why I want to make sure I wasn't sure if they would just were center line, or I think that's something we need to suggest that they kind of.
Look at that, and we'll provide some kind of a definition for.
Iron out there. Trying to take as much ambiguity ambiguity away. Sorry, it's after 10 o'clock. My big words start to fall off. All right.
Kelly, can I ask you a question? On your on your memo on this, oh, boy, and I need my glasses, on C, section E3?
Yes.
Okay, so you said perhaps this should be amended to the commercial application of these substances. What did you mean by that?
It actually kind of piggybacks on something that Dennis had mentioned earlier. So we're thinking there's some of the single single family properties where their properties, you know, are almost entirely within this. If they went out, and that's their backyard, that's their lawn, and they wanted to apply some fertilizer, that would be different from, you know, the a big company coming in and just doing it for their warehouses or something like that. I'm sure Dennis could come up with some better language for it. But it was really see how this would apply for a single family resident who had their swing set back there and wanted grass growing underneath it.
Okay.
So residential application would allow residential application of approved.
I would have to come up with something because that's I think you brought it up earlier, maybe it was Sandy with what if it's a residential development? And how do you want to handle that if you've got was it Genco that had?
Yes.
Maybe I think we'd have to consider how to word that. But I think you get you get my point of if it's a single family versus if it's an apartment complex is really.
Also, I also don't want to include people from using like, there are a bunch of newer, like mosquito, Joe, like there are like organic companies out there now that will come down and do mosquito or tick or treatments on single family dwellings. So I don't think we want to we want to make sure homeowners could still, if they want to have, you know, green chemicals put down. Again, it's probably pretty hard to enforce. But again, we don't want to potentially screw a homeowner from not allowing to have, you know, tick treatment in their backyard or something like that.
And, you know, commercial application, again, I think it's probably not the best phrase in case somebody looks at it and says, well, you hired a landscaper now. Is that making?
Right, that's what I was.
No, that's not what I meant, because obviously some single family residences use landscapers. And I'm not looking to do that. It was it was just to not restrict. I thought it might be restrictive on those. That was advice I provided to you and a suggestion that I also provided to the Board of Trustees.
Okay.
Anybody have Rob, Tommy, Joe, anything else we want to get back to the?
Sometimes fertilizers or lawn ins are deemed to be all right one year, and then the next year they're not. Can we perhaps have language that perhaps what is currently considered safe and things that are not safe, they're further banned from that point? I mean, I'm sure I have in my garage some fertilizers for the lawn that is no longer acceptable. I just want to make sure that, you know, that we stay current with what is safe and what is not safe is banned.
Approved and unapproved.
Yeah, current EPA approved. Besides pesticides, whatever.
For example, I don't I wouldn't consider Roundup to be safe anymore from, you know, cases that we've heard and so forth. And at one time, that was considered to be a very, you know, safe thing. And all right, and spring.
But how does that get policed, Dennis?
It's hard to police. I mean, Gary'd have to put a notice out. You see somebody applying something, you just ask them what they're applying. If it is landscapers, I mean, generally, that's a little easier to regulate, you know, instead of a homeowner who has a gallon of Roundup in his garage and wants to get rid of it. The best way to get rid of it is pour it around the foundation or something. So that is a difficult thing.
Anything else, ladies and gentlemen, want to, you know, stick consider before they make the changes?
I like where this is going.
Once, twice, three times a lady. Kelly, you have anything else for us, Dennis?
I just only is Kelly, what's what's the timing on this? We got to put something together and get it over to the Board of Trustees.
Yeah. So there is a work session next week. So I think it would be helpful if we could have something to the Board of Trustees summarizing this conversation by the end of the week, if that's possible.
By the end of this week?
Yeah.
No problem.
Sharpen that pencil.
Them. I think it's a lot of information. Obviously, they have memos from me, they have memos from Dennis, they have memos from the planner. Now they'll have something from the planning board and to really sit down and have a good work session discussion, which again is next week, they're going to need a few days to kind of digest all of this. The law itself is long, so.
Well, it's a complex law and trying to do a good thing. But there, you know, there's a lot in this, and it covers the entire village. So we'll put something together. I just want to make sure I capture all the comments of the board. So.
You take a look at it if you want me to for my notes and Chris as well.
Thanks, I felt just felt that bus come this way.
We didn't miss anything.
Kelly, you recorded this meeting, right? Kelly, you have a recording?
Sorry, Chris.
That's okay. I appreciate everybody's time tonight and the rocky start that we had, then our technical difficulties. Hopefully, next month will go a little smoother. I'll keep everybody updated about when we're going to get back together in person. A lot of it has to do with where the state is with its phasing plan. And then when they, I believe Tim still has not actually opened Village Hall yet. So he would need to rescind that executive order before we could do anything. If I'm correct.
That the the open meetings law has been lifted continued through July 6 at this point.
All right. So if we have to, we can still do at least one more meeting virtually. Okay, cool. Anybody have anything else before I make a motion to close? Up was that Joe? Joe on the second. Any questions? Come on. Nobody wants to stay and talk? All right, everybody. Have a good night, everybody.
Night.
Good night.